At this time, I'd like to welcome you to our regular board meeting. This evening, we have with us Pastor Michael Mathis from Mission Field Ministries to lead us in our invocation, which will be followed by our pledge of allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Your word has been true from the beginning because you alone are God. And we thank you, we thank you, God, for being involved in the affairs of all of mankind. We especially give thanks to you, God, for your mercy and your loving kindness that you allow us to experience many times at our weakest moments. We give thanks to you in all things, the good as well as the tough things that we don't understand. We especially thank you, Lord, for our leadership. Thank you for Mayor Jackie Warner and her leadership and how you continue, God, to guide her and protect her and her family. Not only her, God, but we thank you also for all of the board members, the team players, everyone, God, to come together to help Hope Mills in our own little way that you lead us to be a better place for the people that live here. We thank you, God, and we're always so very grateful for the shield of protection, God, that you allow us to experience as we live out our lives by way of having, I call them angels, shielded angels, God, the law enforcement, Lord, willing to put their lives in harm's way. Lord, for so many people, we thank you for their willingness. We thank you for them loving mankind that much. And we pray that you'll continue to keep a hedge of protection around them as well. And oh, Lord, in these very difficult days and times that we live in, we have man's wisdom, but God, you alone give us the wisdom to make decisions that we'll not regret. And we ask you tonight, we call on you even pertaining to the agenda that's already set, that you would endow the board members once again with your wisdom. And we thank you for everything that you do, and thank you for your shield of protection around the town of Hope Mills, God. We thank you for how you're prospering this town. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the agenda that is before you?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. The first thing on our agenda this evening is a presentation from Metronet Fiber Representative Eddie Massengale and a consideration authorizing our town manager to enter into agreement. I'll turn it over to Mr. Holland at this time, and then Mr. Massengale.
Just as a matter of introduction, again, Eddie Massengale is here from Metronet. And Metronet Company is looking to install fiber throughout the town of Hope Mills, which I think is an excellent opportunity for the town to grow and encourage development and economic development and smart growth. And in these times that a lot of people are doing things virtually from home, fiber will be a big deal that folks can have in their homes to have uninterrupted service that can do several different things in their home all at once. What you have in front of you is from Metronet brought this package by that talks about their company. And then the agreement, the four pages of the agreement was in your agenda, and they brought by some attachments that go along with the agreement. So you have those with you. And Eddie Massengale is here, and he's going to tell you about the process and what they do.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us.
The agreement, the attachments that Drew gave you, it's a little bit more detail so that way you may have some questions, and I'll address those by behalf of go through them. My name is Eddie Massengale, and the name of our company is Metronet. We're based out of Evansville, Indiana. We service a little over 100 communities in nine states with fiber to the premise, fiber to the home, to the business. And we're looking, we're constantly looking to expand. We've been looking at Cumberland County, Fayetteville, and the surrounding areas for the past two years, past 18 months, we've been negotiating with the surrounding cities. And we're to the point now that we're finalizing our agreements with PWC. We've got Lumbee River and, of course, Duke. And so we want to, we ask the cities to enter into an agreement. And that's not a contract. It's simply an agreement. Because we're not asking for funding, we're funding the entire project ourself. It's a total of about $100 million investment on Metronet's park. So what we're asking is primarily is the construction stage of it. Now, in the agreement, it talks about what we're going to provide. We do provide fiber, and it's full gigabit service to the home. It's symmetrical up and down. We do have business services as well. It outlines what we offer. But then we're also talking, if you go over to the second part, it says city commitments, then we're looking at what we're asking for you, for the city to do. And basically, we would like blanket permitting. We ask that we get permitting at no charge. We don't know if that's always possible, but we ask, again, because we're not asking for any monetary, any funding from the city. We do ask for, and then we talk about our construction procedures. The main thing is, is in your, we follow the utilities. So if it's on poles, if your utility's on poles, we're on poles. If it's underground, we're underground. Primarily, we have two points that we want to cover. The first one is, is on how we actually, sometimes we may have to set a pole. Once we start construction, it's very fast-paced. We're hoping to have this whole, this entire thing done in two years. It's a four-year project, but we think we can do it in two. But when we start running, especially aerial, we may get to poles that are overloaded or for whatever reason, we can't get on that pole, and it just stops the process. And sometimes it could take three months, it could take six months, it could take a year for whoever owns that pole, whether it be PWC or Lumbee River, whoever, to either replace that pole or upgrade it. So what we're asking is to set a temporary pole next to that pole to keep our process going. Then when they upgrade and replace that pole, then we take ours down, and we, of course, attach to that pole. That's the main thing. And then also, we're asking for permission to micro trench in areas where, let's say it's that we can't get on poles, and if it's, for example, in downtown areas where you've got a lot of concrete, it's, you know, three-quarter inch, one-inch wide slit, 18 inches deep, we drop our fiber in it, and then we fill it with epoxy. So that's the main thing. Now, also too, we talk about, you know, we would want the opportunity for one-on-one sales consultations with your residents. Now, we can do that by appointment, however you want to do it. A lot of people refer to it door-to-door sales, but it's, the reason we ask to do that is we don't require contracts. So if you're a Metronet customer, you're month-to-month. We don't, no long-term contracts. So we want the opportunity to sit down with you as a potential customer and look at what you currently have and what you may need. Not everybody needs gigabit service. You know, some people may need 100 up, 100 down, or 200, whatever it may be. So, but we ask, we do ask permission to do that. And again, we work with the city, we work with the HOAs, whoever it may be, to set that up. But I don't know if there's an ordinance about that or not. We hadn't really looked into that, and that's why we put it in here. City business, if any time in the future we have an opportunity to bid on city business, we'd like that opportunity. We're not requesting it. We don't, it doesn't have to be part of it. We just ask the opportunity, that's all. And then we do, I did put some samples of drawings in here. Now, these are not, these are just examples. Obviously, we use engineered drawings, and we submit engineered drawings to the city. But we have the sample construction drawings. I also put in aerial and the underground drawings, just so you can see what they would look like. And everything else is pretty much, I've kind of lined it out the best we could. So we're just asking permission for the city to enter into an agreement with us. Any questions?
Have any questions, anyone?
I'll do, Madam Mayor. Well, I didn't really have a question, but you kind of already covered it, and I see it under point number five, under your construction procedures. My only thing was the aesthetics, and you kind of explained that in some cases, you may have to put two of those poles side by side, which can probably be a temporary eyesore. But I do believe that the service is highly, highly needed, and it's good for us.
Well, and what we're talking about there, because a lot of times, people have a question about, you know, what's it going to look like? First of all, we put the, we're going to set a pole. It's in line with the pole line that's currently there. We're not going to, you know, it's not going to be yellow or anything like that. It's not going to stand out. In other words, it's just going to be aesthetically pleasing. So you really shouldn't even notice it, is our point there.
That was my only other comment. Thank you for your presentation.
Because, you know, we, you know, we don't want to set poles either.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it costs us money. And by and large, we don't really have to set a lot of poles. We're just asking permission on the front end because if we need to, we don't want to have to come back and ask permission. Again, because we want to get this, get in and get out as quick as we possibly, possibly can. The faster we get it built, the faster we get customers, the faster we start seeing a return on our investment.
Do you have any kind of example of what the cost for the customer would be?
Yes, ma'am. I also put a presentation in there that you can take a look at, but on the, I did put that in there.
Is it in his booklet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And for example, 100 up, 100 down, all of our speeds are symmetrical. You're looking at 49.95 for internet only, all the way up to 89.95 for gigabit service. And again, that's symmetrical. You get same up as you get same down. And we do have 10 gig in our lab. Well, I don't know who would need 10 gig at home, but we're going to have it available. We also offer full complement of TV channels, the telephone, same services you have now.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was at the pricing page too, and I had a question before the mayor did. Asked, is there any bundle pricing? Because I didn't understand, that wasn't there.
You mean as far as like for an HOA or something like that?
No, I'm looking for, on your pricing list, you have separate price for fiber internet, fiber TV, fiber phone?
No. And we've offered it in the past, but pretty much in full, for a lot of full disclosure, I just wanted to tell you what the prices are. Here's the thing, we do offer bundle pricing. I didn't put it in here.
Okay.
Forty percent of our customers now are strictly internet. People are starting to go over the top. One of the reasons for the consultative sale is so we can show people how to do that. A lot of people don't know how to subscribe to Hulu and how to make it work on their TV or, you know, Apple, whatever it may be. People in my age group primarily. But we can teach them and show them how to do that. But now, it's a little bit over 40% of our customers are strictly internet.
And this system is compatible with Hulu and Netflix?
Oh, sure, yes.
And what other programs?
Anything that, anything that's out there. It's future-proof. Yep. This is the latest, greatest technology there is.
Okay.
And, you know, something else you need to look at, in addition to what it's going to provide you as a resident, from a town standpoint, I mean, you know, you guys have got quality of life in abundance here, just from.
Thank you.
You know, from, you know, if you look at, I live in Chattanooga, Tennessee, born and raised there. And we've got gigabit service. And I know when we first, you know, 12 years ago, when our local EPB started putting it in, everybody kept thinking, you know, why do we need it? Well, now you look, and we've got, you know, we've got a Volkswagen plant, we've got two Amazon facilities, we've got four of the top 10 startups in the United States based in Chattanooga. And everything you read over and over again, it's all quality of life. But you got to have the infrastructure. And that infrastructure is going to give you something you don't have now. It's going to appeal to a lot of companies, a lot of industry.
Do you have something? Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Massengale, I think this is something that is very needed in this area.
Yes, ma'am.
And we really appreciate the opportunity. I do have a question. The solicitation. You've got, Metronet will be allowed to conduct door-to-door consultive sales in the town between the hours of 7:00 a.m.
Well, actually, that should be 10:00 a.m.
And 10:00 p.m. So my question is, would you consider those hours to be different?
Yes. Actually, actually, when I put that in there, because our construction is from 7.
10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.?
Yes, ma'am. We can do that.
Okay.
We can do that.
10:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
But I can do both, before we say that.
Okay. And then my other question is, a lot of people have on their doors, no solicitation allowed. Would you honor that?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, and in fact, it's, you know, even, we work with, we'd like to work with a lot of HOAs, you know, if they have an HOA, you know, if they have any kind of organization to the neighborhood at all, we'd like to work with them. Here's the thing, just like with construction, you know, before we do any construction, we send a letter out 30 days prior to, just explaining to everybody who we are, what we're going to do. We explain to them what an easement is. A lot of people don't understand what an easement is or where it is. And then two weeks later, we send out a postcard reminding them that we're coming. And then seven to 10 days prior to construction, we even put a yard dart next to their mailbox, you know, and then, and then we put a sign at the entrance saying, you know, Metronet, we're coming. So everybody's very much aware. Generally, it's not an issue, most people, once we start construction, you know, people will reach out to us. But we do want the opportunity, if there's an ordinance, and we'll coordinate that with the development of, you know, whoever, because we're not just going to bombard people like that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes.
When you talk about solicitation, when you're sending out letters and pamphlets, you're going to use your company's letterhead and not the town of Hope Mills?
No, it's our letterhead, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have some neighbors, well, being a senior myself, a lot of my senior friends, they have no solicitation at all. But I've had several of them ask about the fiber. Is there any way, even if you see the sign there, that you can leave a card, so, and a number, they could call you back?
We'll actually even put a sticker on their garage door.
Okay.
We certainly, and we also have a website that they can go to. Once we start construction, the website goes live. And then people can actually go to the portal, and they can put in their information and pre-sign up. So, and we also have a website for when we start construction. So let's say we're coming through your yard, and we dig up your sprinkler system. I mean, this is very invasive construction, and things do happen. But we do have a website that they can go to, and they can, they can fill out a ticket. We respond to all tickets within 24 hours. The majority of hours are taken care of within, you know, three to four days, you know, because, but things do happen. But a lot of that, we're depending heavily on locates, and the locators actually mark the utilities. So, you know, we have to, we have to be careful there.
Since, if, if in fact, we're going to go into this agreement, could we not put this also on our website so that way they would have, maybe have the link to their website? I think there would be a lot of interest in this, but I do believe the more we can let people know that this is something that the town has entered into agreement with, that would help as far as the people feeling better about it.
And we also, even in the construction phase, we, you know, we can link, put a link on your website if people have a question. We do have an 800 number. We have two call centers 24/7. We've got one in Paducah, Kentucky, one in Evansville. So all of our call centers are stateside. So, yeah, but we'll work with you on that.
Where have you, where do you have an agreement close by us?
We're just, this is our first, this is our first time in North Carolina.
Okay.
I'm actually from Chattanooga. I joined the company about three years ago. I came on board. They wanted to get penetration in the southeast. So I guess I needed somebody that talks like me. But I needed two major markets, and I chose Cumberland County and Tallahassee. We started construction in Tallahassee, and now we're going to, we're looking to try to get this started, and then we'll kind of fill in. It's a calling card, if you so to speak. In other words, we, people in South don't really care what people in Ohio do.
Right.
I mean, I'm exaggerating that point. You understand what I'm saying. So I needed reference in the southeast and could show, and see, Tallahassee and this market is very similar in demographic and population size as Chattanooga. So I wanted to show what could happen economically in a market like this, once you have the infrastructure. Now, since then, obviously, the pandemic has come along, and we're seeing even more reasons why you need it with remote learning and telemedicine and people, and people working remote from home.
And the last question that I would have would be that we have, we have our, what we call our MIA, and we also, there's gaps between our town limits and the next part of our town. Would it be considered that you could go through that MIA? I mean, I don't know, my.
They're working right now with the city of Fayetteville to try to strike a deal.
This would be Cumberland County. This would be Cumberland County.
Were you talking about with PWC? Yeah, we've been, we've been negotiating with PWC last.
I was just thinking, we go, like, if you go out to exit 40, exit 41, that's an area that I'm sure would benefit greatly from it. But it's two miles from, it's, you go back into the town of Hope Mills. So there's an area there that where you're not Hope Mills. And that's why I'm just thinking that this would, for our area, as fast as we're growing.
Yes, ma'am.
This would be something that would benefit those growing areas.
Well, let me give you an example. I had a call out of, we built Lexington, Kentucky, and there's a little town called Nicholasville. I had a call a couple of weeks ago from a lady. She said, you know, we've got 61 homes in our development, and, you know, but we're not in Nicholasville. So when we started looking, they're about six miles, three and a half to six miles away. I called the HOA and spoke to our HOA president. I said, "Look, if you can get me 25 people that want the service, that will commit, we'll build it." And he called me today when I landed in Fayetteville, and he says, "Look," he said, "I have 61, I got 60."
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, so we'll, so in other words, we look at those areas, we pre-sell them.
What we're faced with now is with virtual learning and with the number of kids that aren't in school and with not having the internet access in certain areas close by. So that, that's another reason that I think this would be important for.
It is important. And, you know, there's some people that need it worse than we do. And remote learning is one of them. I was on a call just a couple of months ago, and with AT&T was on there and Comcast and Verizon, they're talking about all these areas that they're lighting up, you know, whether it be a community center or whatever, where these kids can come and with their Chromebooks or laptops and get online. My question was, how do they get there? And, you know, you'd have thought that I'd said something bad about them, but, I mean, that is the point. How do they get there? So I think that, you know, that we need, those kids need it as well. Now, we've got some solutions that we're looking at now that will address some areas where we don't have as much density, because, you know, density is an enemy of ours too. You know, we can't, you know, we need enough, when we pass a home or a business, we call it a pass. We need enough passes per mile to justify running the fiber. But sometimes, we just have to come together as a company and as a community and do the right thing. So to answer your question, yes, we'll work diligently to work those solutions out.
Okay. Do we have other questions? Any questions?
If I may.
Yes, sir.
I assume all the terms on this subject in negotiation, because there's a few points that we'll probably need to address.
Sure. Sure. Yeah. And again, it's not a contract, it's an agreement. So we have to come, you know, both sides have to come to an agreement. As long as we're, here's the thing, our objective is not so much, it's, once we start, we don't want to stop. So as long as we know and you know what the terms are going in, then it's easier, it's easier on us, it's easier on the city, it's easier on the residents.
It would be a contract, so we need to make sure it's compliant.
Okay. I understand. But to answer your question, yes, we can be happy to, we're open to anything, reasonably.
Do you have any other questions? Or I think the, if this is something that we're interested into entering into an agreement, we would ask that the town manager and our town attorney make sure that that agreement is one that is appropriate and would be acceptable before it was signed. But I think what they're asking is for us to authorize our town manager, I guess along with our town attorney, to investigate the possibility of this or to actually authorize them to make that decision. Would that be the appropriate motion that they need to make? Mr. Hartsough?
Yeah, to negotiate and execute an agreement with Metronet.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, now I forgot exactly what you just said, to have the town manager and the town attorney to enter agreement or negotiation with Metronet Fiber.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, and that's a 4-0. Thank you, sir. Looking forward to seeing you again.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Happy to be here. All right, next thing on our agenda is a presentation by the architect of the Public Safety Center project, Scott Garner, and to make contract recommendations for the Hodges Safety Building. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Holland again.
Okay. More good news.
Yes. It's a good news night.
This is something we've been waiting for, for a long time.
Yes.
I'll let Scott go into more detail on it, but we did open the bids on November 5th. We had six bidders. We got some excellent bids, and Scott Garner is here from Garner Brown, and he looked into the bidders and the low bidder specifically, and he has a recommendation for us tonight.
Okay. Welcome. Glad you're back.
Good evening. Nice to see you all.
Yes, it's been a while. We're glad you're back.
Thank you, Mayra Thompson. I'm glad to be here. On November 5th, we opened bids in this room for the John W. Hodges Public Safety Building. I'm very happy to say they were under budget, which is always a major accomplishment. We had four bidders between 11.4 and 11.8 million dollars, which is a very tight group, and that's a good sign that they're all bidding the same project, so. It too, that others that were higher. The low bidder was Gleason Construction Company. They have offices in Troy, Michigan, Charlotte, and Austin, Texas. They're a family-owned construction company. They've been in business 97 years. They're well experienced. They have focused primarily on private work. Because of COVID, they're branching more into public work. And as they went, they were very aggressive in their price in going after this project. They have submitted to me references, and I've talked to a number of architects and people that they have worked with. All gave favorable responses to me. They have given me the resume of their project manager and superintendent. They are both well-experienced people. They are well-qualified and can do this job. And I've checked with the licensing board for the state of North Carolina. They are properly licensed, and they have no complaints against that firm. I would recommend that we, you enter into a contract with Gleason Builders for this project.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Oh, I have some there.
All right.
And since we're talking about such a large amount of money, I appreciate a little latitude when I ask them. One of the, one of the things that jumps out, and I appreciate Mr. Gardner being back again. It's always a.
Glad to be here.
A pleasure seeing you and working with you again. When we're looking, and just, I may be a little, they may need a little education here, but when I look at a bid, is that the guaranteed maximum price of this project?
No, sir.
No, sir. Just want to make sure.
No, sir.
Okay.
That is the contract amount. When we go through this, we have in addition to the price, this price, we have unit prices for bad dirt. I don't know if you know what bad dirt is. Bad dirt won't hold up your building, you have to replace it. There will be, as we work through this process, there will be changes that are made, and we have to address that. We have change orders for that. We have to scrutinize those to make sure that they're fair both ways. If we take something out, we get a credit. If we take something out, we get a credit. If we add some work to it, they get to be paid for it. But it's a, it's a very, um, organized, it's a, it's a, it's a requirement for a job of this magnitude.
Okay, so the bid from Gleason, eleven million, four hundred and sixty thousand. That doesn't include a contingency?
No, it does not. It does not. We have a contingency, and we used to, we used to tell the contractor, put in this much money is a contingency. We found out that that became a game, that he knew this money was there and he wanted to get it. And so we don't tell him how much it is. We have it, but he doesn't know how much we have.
Okay.
It's a way, it's a way we can guard your money.
Understand. And this bid, does it include the, uh, the demolition of the site?
The site work is a major part of this project. It includes demolition of the police building. And, and there are a lot of things. L.A. Priest will be demolished, um, on this side, not behind you. But there is a lot of site work. I mean, my guess is the site work is going to be several months in process before we dig in foundation, I mean, start digging foundations.
We have a separate line item for demolition. One million, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. So I guess where I'm.
That, that, that's an estimate.
That's an estimate.
That is our estimate. That is not his estimate. That is our estimate.
So my question is, is that amount included in the bid or is that not included in the bid?
It is included in the bid.
Okay. Reason I ask that is because it had a separate line item unto itself. We budgeted construction at twelve point one seven eight four hundred. And then site demolition was budgeted at one five six eight five hundred.
That, that's a, that is a budget that we prepared, um, prior to the bid. That is not the contractor's bid. But, but the demolition is part of the construction process. The, we have a single prime contract, so. Maybe I'll tell you my age, but we, we used to, we used to bid projects where we have a separate plumber, separate mechanical, separate electrical contractor. Well, they were all, it was hard to coordinate things. So now the state says you can do a single prime contract. Put all these things under him, and he's responsible to get them done. That includes the demolition and site prep, the whole nine yards.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. That's very good to know.
What you're looking at is the town's project budget.
Mm-hmm.
That, the contractor does not have that. That's our budget. That's what we estimated before we have these bids. Now that we have the bids in, I'm going to be amending that project budget.
Okay.
But that demolition was a separate line because we want to keep the demolition of these buildings separate in our budget from the actual construction of the new building.
Mm-hmm.
Because the construction of a new building is the asset that will be the new building. The demolition of the current property, I'm going to keep that separate so we know how much that cost is. So as far as our budget's concerned, I'm keeping it separate. As far as the contractor, it's all part of his bid and the entire thing. So it is part of the eleven-four that the contractor bid in.
Okay.
But we're keeping it separate for our records.
I got it. I got it.
And, and he will give us a detailed breakdown on the costs which will be given to the town so we'll know what each component of his bid is.
And Mr. Gardner, my last question, thank you, mayor. My last one is, um, when we're looking at this company Gleason, um, how favorable are they to hiring local folks, subcontractors to enhance our economic development here in Cumberland County and especially in Hope Mills? Because I think they're based out of Charlotte, aren't they?
Well, they have an office in Charlotte. The headquarters is in Troy, Michigan. They, they are, they are open to it. They are price-driven. If a local contractor gives them the best price, they will use the local contractor.
Good.
If, if it's somebody from Raleigh or wherever else gives them a better price, they will use that price.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is because this could really generate a lot of local jobs for our community, and I hope that that's exactly what the company is about.
I hope it will. I hope it will.
I do too.
Yeah, I do.
Thank you, mayor.
Yes, sir.
And the only reason why I bring this up is because we've run into this before. If anybody's listening tonight, they know exactly what our budget is now. Because it was just given out. So without a guaranteed maximum price like, uh, Commissioner Belfour said, we ran into this when we did the dam. They knew how much money we had, and it was change order after change order until they sucked every bit of that money dry. And without some kind of guarantee on this price here, this is like an open check. But they can say they can build it for eleven-four, but they know now how much we got. And I just feel like without a G M P, it's, it's an open check, but for change orders. And I know things happen. I know things are missed. Um, I've dealt with projects like this before, but.
I agree with you.
I would like to see some type of guarantee. And my other question is, um, you said that this company primarily dealt on the private side, and because of the COVID, they were branching out. Is this like the first type of major project like this this company is taking on compared to these other ones?
Yes, sir. They, they, they have done some others. Uh, they did, um, let's see if I. They did the Criminal Justice Resource Center in Durham. Uh, they've done some work in Asheville.
So it's not, it's not the first project.
It's not their first project.
So they, they're familiar with bidding these bigger projects.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The only, the only drawback I have is I'd like to see some kind of guarantee on that pricing. I mean, you know, eleven point four, you said they aggressively bid it, you know, to get the job. Did they, my, my thing is that tells me that they may have to get the job underbid some places, and that just tells me there's change orders coming right off the bat.
Well, they, change orders only happen when all the parties involved agree to it. The architect, the contractor, and the owner. And we're going to scrutinize every, every cha- potential change. If we take something out, we get a credit. If we add work, they get additional money. The legal system is set up and so it works that way, and it has to work that way. These jobs are way too complex to, to envision every detail in that job. We've got a hundred and thirty sheets of drawings and six hundred pages of specifications. And things are going to happen, and we've got to work through this process. It has to be a fair process. It has to be a legal process. It's open to you, to me, and to the contractor. And we've got to work together as a team to make it happen. It has to be fair. It has to be fair. If you're asking for a guaranteed maximum price, we could probably do that. It would probably cost fifteen million dollars. I mean, this is.
Oh, yeah. I mean, they're going to.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, we, we, we can't do that. I mean, we, we can say there will, there will be no changes, and we will get an inflated price because of that, and that's, that's not going to work.
But the change orders would come before this board, before they would be made. I think that's the other thing is that the, the, we built two dams. The first dam that was built, change orders were made. The changes were made, and then the board approved after the fact. So as long as the board is in on that decision about these changes on the front end, I think that's what we're looking for, is making sure that everybody's in the process.
And I fully agree with that. I mean, if, if, uh, a contractor, if, if there's going to be a change, and a contractor elects to go ahead with the work before it's approved by the, me and this board and his price, then he's taking the risk because we may not agree to it. Uh, and it, that's a serious part of this business, and we have to look at that very carefully.
Okay. Does that help?
I mean.
Because I think that was the main thing, is that the understanding on the front end is.
And I think.
Well, we, and the only reason why I say that, because with the, with the last dam that, that was done, um.
Not this current dam.
Not this current one, but, but the one I was involved with, a lot of, um, during the construction of whatever, when I was on the board previously, there was a lot, like the mayor said, there was a lot of change orders that came after.
Well, they should not come after.
It was like an open check.
And that, that is one of the questions that I ask the people that I talk to. How are they on change orders? I mean, some contractors that I have worked with are just, every time they put in an extra nail, they want, they want a change. You do one little thing, they want to change. We can't work that way. We've got to work together. And if they're change order happy, then I don't want to have them as our contractor. But the report I got from the architects, and, and architects will tell me, things they might not tell you, but, but they, they indicated to me they were very fair on changes. They indicated they were very fair on changes.
Now, my, my, I got one more question. So this is to town mayor. Y'all, are y'all in agreeance with this? I mean, like you, you and Drew.
Yes.
Everybody's good.
And I, and I will say, I think one of the major changes with the previous dam was, and, and the reason that the guaranteed maximum price worked so well with the previous dam was because that was a design build. This is completely different. This is not a design build that we're talking about.
No, it is not.
So it is, and I think, um, Scott, you can back me up on this. This is a whole different animal that we're talking about here, so.
It is. And, and in design, design bill.
And that the two companies, until we kind of went through the last few bumps that we went through, the two companies worked very seamlessly together. And we didn't have any issues. So until the, you know, company, that one company had its restructuring. So, um, just some figure of thought on that.
But with design bill, you can have a maximum price. I mean, you can. You can. You can.
But this is, this is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's a different, whole different approach to construction.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So this is, so this is your recommendation as well?
It is.
Okay.
And, and fortunately, we're well under budget. I mean, I, I'm very pleased about that. Get, getting past the budget. I mean, I guess this is the only good thing that has come out of COVID, as far as I can tell, is that there's a scarcity of work, and contractors are looking for work to keep people busy. So, uh, we got a very good price on this.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
Madam Mayor, I have, I have a follow-up if no one else does.
All right. Okay, that's it.
I appreciate what Commissioner Marley was talking about with guaranteed maximum price. Was, that's one of my first questions that I was asking you. And I understand your philosophy of what you were saying about the G M P. And, and I go back to what he was saying as well, is that during the first dam, and I, I don't want to beat this too hard, but during the first dam, we watched change orders that were just not managed, period. I mean, just unmanageable. In the second dam that was built, it was a design build between two companies that believed in value and in quality. And they did give us a G M P. And there, and that minimized change orders all the way to the very end. That dam has, has with, withstood a lot of turbulence since it's been built. And I'd like to see this project do the very same thing. So it's, it's, my questions would be more out of caution than to finger-point any company. I don't know this, I don't know Gleason. I, I don't know anything about them. I trust what you're saying, that you have vetted them, and that they're the appropriate company to take on this seventeen million dollar project, because that's pretty much what we're budgeted for. But I will ask you this. What type of warranty are we looking at on the back end?
On the building?
Yep.
Well, in, in construction, there are different kinds of warranties. The general contractor will give you a one-year warranty on that building. Then the components, heating and air conditioning, other things, generator, whatever, will have different warranties that go with it. But, uh, and, and believe me, I want you to understand. I take to heart what you're saying about change orders because, uh, that's something that's very important to me. I mean, what I will tell the contractor, we will have a pre-construction meeting, okay? And be- before we start, and we'll meet all the, all the players, and we'll talk about who's going to do what, when, and how we're going to, how he's going to get paid and all that. Well, I will never, he will want to get paid every month, okay? And, and he has to be because it's, that's the way the process works. I will never approve a pay for, application for payment unless I ride down here and look out there and see what is done, and he gets paid for what he has done, not what he's going to do two months from now. He's going to get paid for what he's done. We take one day at a time. We make the right decision that day. If, if a change is warranted, we will do it. If it is not warranted, we will refuse it. But we will have a fair process, and it means fair to you, fair to the contractor, to all the parties involved. It's got to be fair.
And I thank you, sir, for saying that. I, I believe you. I truly do.
It's got to be fair. And, uh, I can tell you some stories about that, but I won't take your time right now.
Ms. Adams, just, are we looking for a, a motion to approve this recommendation this evening? Is that the action we need tonight or?
I think, yes, of accept the recommendation. Do you want a motion to approve the recommendation, Drew?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Okay, a motion to accept the recommendation, and we've got.
I'll make the motion to, let me make sure I got it right. Make the motion to accept the Public Safety Center project presentation by Scott Garner to make the contractor recommendation for Hodges Safety Building. And I think the contractor that you have recommended is, turn it back over.
Gleason Builders.
I'll make sure Gleason Builders.
Have a motion. We have a second. Have a motion and a second.
With a total bid amount of eleven million, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, have, have a motion and a second. Uh, any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, thank you very much. We're looking forward to getting this started.
Thanks for the.
Okay, just to give you an update.
Thank you, Scott.
On the project itself. First of all, I'm going to read to you Gleason. Scott had sent them some questions to ask in part of the vetting process, any questions that they may have. And in one of the responses, um, they bragged on, uh, the plans that we had submitted. And I'll read straight from a sheet here. He said, "The completeness of the documents is the other X factor that brings challenges to a project. We were impressed with the completeness of the design. We can tell that the owner, which is us, the town, and the A E worked," this is Scott, "worked diligently together to provide a complete set of construction documents. Even some of the subcontractors mentioned that the completeness was a breath of fresh air when comparing similar projects." So when we look at how long this has taken, and this, me and Scott were talking about it earlier, this has taken a long time to get to this point. Uh, COVID has delayed it some, and there, there were other some things that came out that delayed it some. But to have the contractor and some of his subcontractors that were looking at the plans in order to give us this estimate, compliment, you know, what we have submitted, I think that's, that's a lot. And I sent it to the department heads nearby that's been involved with it up to this point and said, "Great job on getting these plans in a, in a good order." So I think that complements the town, and we should all take credit in that.
Thank you, sir.
Um, the other thing is, just an update to the process from here. So I will send a letter of intent to Gleason Builders saying, you know, he is the approved contractor at this point, contingent on financing. So I have sent out RFPs to eight banks. Um, I've heard back from two of them that I know that are going to bid on it. The others, they make, but I just haven't heard from them yet. I'll get those bids in this Thursday to see, this is for the construction loan. It'll be a two-year, right now estimated to be a two-year construction loan. And to update you, Jesse, it's not a seventeen million dollar project anymore. Since the bids came in lower, it's going to be about a fifteen million dollar project now, which is good because we won't have to borrow those funds. We'll only be approved to borrow what the project actually costs. So once I get the, um, bank information in, I will start working on a package to get to the local government commission for their January meeting, the first Tuesday of January, for them to approve the construction loan. So I'll be bringing to you the first meeting of December, the agreement with the bank for the construction loan. Once you approve that, I'll submit the documentation to L G C, and we can, um, wait for their approval the first Tuesday of January. Once that's done, then the, um, contractor is, is good to go with everything that we need to do so we can count on more than likely having a groundbreaking sometime in January.
Very good.
So.
Good way to start twenty twenty-one.
Yeah. So that's the update of where we are and what's happening next.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, and thank you, thank you, Scott, for coming tonight. Next, we have, um, uh, public comments, and this evening we have someone representing the prime movers to come speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerome McGeechee, I'm chairman for the Hope Mills Prime Movers Committee. And again, want to say thank you to the entire committee for allowing this committee to be such. One of the things that we're going to do, of course, I talked to Commissioner Bellflower last week. He wanted to know what was going on, so here we are. We're going to tell you what we're doing, what we aren't doing, and what's going to happen. So basically, for the month of December, dates are tangent at this point. We're going to be doing an Operation Toy Drop for the kids, Operation Toy Enclosed Drop. Throughout the town of Hope Mills and Fayetteville possibly, you're going to see boxes with basically wrapping. It's going to have contact information. And basically, what we're going to do is going to put, people are going to put toys, you know, new socks, whatever they think deemed necessary to put in it, and they're going to, we're going to give them out to kids. Of course, how are we going to give them out to kids? We're going to make contact with DSS. One of our, actually, one of our members works with DSS, so that's great. We're going to contact, I work at the school system, we're going to find out, social workers at the school system, we're going to get in contact with them and find out needy families. And we also know that during the Christmas holidays, people are not always needy, they're sometimes greedy. So we're going to find out someone that's actually needy and need these events, need these items from us. We have made contact with different stores, and all of them are on board, because you can't, I can say you can't, but it's very rare that you tell a kid, "No, we're not going to help kids out." So just to let you know, you may be seeing some of these boxes around town. We're going to get in contact with the manager, the mayor, whoever, and get the blessings that we can put some items in the rec center, or the town hall, police department, fire department, different, Parks and Rec, of course, different departments in the town, and see if that is necessary, see if we can do that. We're going to give them out, and we're going to try to get in contact with Parks and Rec. And we want to do maybe, do it maybe in the gym as far as wrapping the gifts. Some companies and stores are going to donate wrappings, boxes, Amazon, everybody getting Amazon right now. So we have a lot of people going to donate boxes. And we want to know if possible, can use the gym with maybe our committee, which is about seven people, and maybe their kid, our kids, will come out to the gym if, you know, if it's available. Gym is large enough, we can sit there, you know, have cocoa, chocolate, wrap gifts, and the dates are going to change, of course. And we're going to get with DSS or whoever, and give the gifts out, and go from there. But basically, we want to let you guys be aware of that's one of the events that we're going to do. We're also in the process of doing other things. I actually made contact with Carly Sees on last week, and just went in and told them who I was, what we're doing, and they, right off the bat, gave thirty bags of groceries. I mean, it wasn't a whole bunch, you want a turkey and everything, but it was thirty bags. And they, we told them what we're doing, and they was like, "Wow, yes, we're going to give it." Chick-fil-A, same thing, they said that we're going to give approximately twenty to thirty gift cards. Of course, we know they're going to be closing on Christmas, you know, Thanksgiving and Christmas, but you can use it before and after. And of course, Biscuitville, as you say, as you stated, we're going to contact them as well. So we do look forward to working with them and want to let you know what we're doing and what we're going to be doing. And my time is up, and thank you so very much.
Thank you so much for all you're doing. Appreciate everything you're doing for us. Thank you. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like pulled and moved to new business? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have from old business, update on the Par Four Development Project, and is Mr. McLaughlin here?
Do you have anything, Chancellor?
Same.
Yeah, I don't think he, I think he reached out again today, and nothing.
Yeah.
I, I will tell you that Eddie Maynor, the representative for the community, understands, and I believe we might need to have an opportunity for him to give his thoughts about this process, because having been a former commissioner, he understands the time constraints sometimes. But I also believe he's a, a tone for the community, because the majority, I think, now understand that there's, they don't see, I said later, they don't, earlier, they don't see any bulldozers, they don't see anything happening. So they know there's not, there's no plan right now to, to do anything. So they're just on hold until we give them further information. So that was good news, I thought, from the representative that we have on our committee that we haven't been able to meet until the developers actually have something. And, and the other thing I think was brought to my attention that I was going to mention also is, right now, we are not financially, we're not obligated, we're not, the only thing we're waiting is our, our time is obligated, as we're waiting to pull this committee back together and have a full committee meeting. So I just want our community to know that we're on top of this, but until those developers and DOT and, and all the working parts come together, and then that committee has a meeting to look at what they propose. So that's, there's no true update, other than what I just, what I've said, basically the same thing we had last meeting. Next, we have discussion, update on a workable resolution regarding a community safety flooding situation at Seaway and Carriage School on Rockfish Road, Sumner and Dever Street. I was, I was going to ask also, I know you sent us lots of emails and reference. I know there was a committee that met, that talked about this, so I was going to just turn this over to Ms. Adams. I know you gave us lots of, okay, so give us, if you give us your update, because I know we got lots of information.
I do have an update. So I did get a response today from Richie Hines. And so I told him I would read it at the meeting tonight, and so I will do that. "Good afternoon, Melissa, I hope you are well. I saw you email Janet as well today. I'm sorry for the delay. I was out of the office on Friday, and I've been visiting storm sites today to document areas of repair. I know that the department has performed some ditch work in the past in front of the school, but I have been advised that it wasn't very comprehensive and was more just maintenance work. You can let the board know tonight that I am consulting with our hydraulics unit to see if it would be feasible to create more storage area in front of the school for the larger storm events. We will have to weigh the benefit of this storage for occasional storms against any liabilities, maintenance issues, safety issues, et cetera, that the department could incur. The projects that will provide the permanent solution are two to three years out, so we will try to assist as best as we can in the meantime." I emailed him back, and I thanked him very much for his response. And I told him that it does seem that these rain events are coming more frequently than they have in the past with more accidents. And I spoke with Don this afternoon, and I had already made up my mind today that I will probably get Don and Bruce and myself, and we will go pay Richie a visit, and whomever else he would like to, I'll make a phone call later this week. Try to schedule something probably right after Thanksgiving, since Thanksgiving is next week. But we'll, we'll schedule a time to go see, you know, Richie Hines and whomever else he would like to have in that meeting, and go have a personal visit with him and plead our case, so.
Would it be appropriate to ask the school system, because they did send someone before? Because I know that, that they're, they're.
They would like to be in on that meeting as well.
Yeah, they're part of this.
And if Beth would like to come as well, too, that might be, that might be appropriate as well. Last week, when I was on my way home, and also Tiffany was right behind me, we, and I have to go that way home. You know, I can go around and, you know, and go fifty-nine and go around, but it's a nightmare. So especially at, you know, five o'clock, the five o'clock traffic, or even if, even if it's five-thirty, it's still, you know, very hectic. But that's when we encountered the accident, and it was very, very obvious that probably what had happened was the person in the vehicle had probably hydroplaned. I can probably get a police report and take it to DOT with me. But, you know, that could have been me, that could have been Tiffany. It could have been any number of us that travel that road, you know. And so I'm going to go and plead our case, you know, and, and say, you know, what is it going to take? Is it going to take somebody getting killed, somebody getting injured? You know, I mean, Beth drives that way every day, you know. And this isn't, this wasn't a hurricane, it wasn't a tropical storm. Now granted, it was, you know, a lot of running over a twenty-four hour period. But still, you know, these rainstorms are coming fast and furious. So it's getting to the point where it is a serious issue. And yes, we were hoping the trees were going to help, and we were hoping that the resurfacing of the road was going to help. And, you know, eh, it helps a little bit when there's a little bit of rain, but not in, in this particular instance.
Well, and I, I know, too, that we probably, the people that normally travel that route, expectations are, is it's going to flood? So you would hope that, you know, when they, when they tell you not to go into flooded waters, you know, I mean, there's all kinds.
Pay attention to that.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is we, we probably need the awareness there, too, because I think that's a, that's a, an issue, too. But this, I think that, when you set that up, the school system, in case they do want to ditch it more, the school system, of course, there's a fence there to keep the kids out of, but any kid walking home from school would find that enticing if there was a lot of water there, probably. Yes, sir.
Would it be feasible, I know the manager said that project was on their radar for maybe two to three years down the road. Would it be feasible for you to maybe reach out as a representative of town to some of our state representatives or something like that, that might be able to help push that a little quicker with DOT? To do something like that?
It's kind of, my, what my awareness is, is it's, there's also the development that's looking at taking place in that area, too.
And that, there, I can't say too much.
Yeah, there's, there's just a lot of other factors.
There's other things that factor into that.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Over a year ago, I brought this to this board, it's a community safety issue. We've had committees, we've talked about this back and forth, we've had a lot of folks involved. But here we are again, with it back on our agenda, with a, a rain event that wasn't even a hurricane last week. And the amount of flooding that went on in that area. And now you've got cars hydroplaning that could have seriously injured someone. It could have been any one of us, it could have been one of our family members, it could have been my daughter, who travels that road every day. So I represent them, in that this has gone on long enough. Now, I know that there's some plans in that area on the long term, but there has to be something that can be done on the short term to alleviate the flooding in that area.
And that would be the meeting that is going to be coming up with Mr. Hines and with Melissa and the group, because if he says that he can ditch it some more, do something different, then that's the goal. That's the goal, to get us something to take care of us at this point. So, so if we can, again, and it is an opportunity now, if we had another rain event, but it's an opportunity now for Ms. Adams and staff to work with DOT, because that is, it is a DOT project that we would like for DOT to hold them accountable for. So I agree with you on that piece, but I do believe we need to let the town manager work through this.
Well, I agree, Mayor, and I'm, and I'm glad that she's going to go meet with Richie Hines. That's exactly what needs to happen here.
Okay.
Because the last thing that we need is someone to be seriously injured or loss of life.
Agreed.
Especially after we've been working this thing for well over a year now, without any resolution. I, I'm just, I'm passionate about it, I don't mean to be, but I, I just am. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, on the new business, and this consideration for approval, North Carolina Highway fifty-nine resolution, R twenty-twenty dash forty. Ms. Adams and myself met with Mr. Hines and the lady with safety, and I, Janet, with safety.
Webster Perez.
We had a meeting with them in reference to the resolution about Highway fifty-nine. The reason we're bringing this new resolution to you is, their conversation that we had with them was that they're not, they're, they're going away from having truck routes, business, and bypasses, because they say it's too confusing. So what they want to do is take the Highway fifty-nine off of our Main Street. And in other words, it's Chickenfoot Road, then it becomes Main Street, then it becomes Hope Mills Road, but the whole road is called Highway fifty-nine. So they'll just give it a, a service road name, they'll still maintain it, it becomes a secondary road. The only thing that would make a big deal would be that in the GPS systems, it removes it as a traveling, a point to travel from three oh one to Rayford Road. It moves traffic that would be going to Rayford Road or going, trying to get to four oh one. It moves them over to one sixty-two. So that what will happen is it, right now, if you put in anything in your GPS, you're going to find that one sixty-two isn't usually the one that's picked, Highway fifty-nine is picked. And it would take some time, but it would be done state, through the state system. So this resolution basically is just stating that it's going to become, they'll still maintain it, they'll still do everything they do. The only thing it's going to be is it's, it will then hopefully will, and if you, I'll read the resolution, I thought that might be beneficial for those that are listening to us by way of the internet. It's "Whereas the town wishes to improve the safety for pedestrians and bicyclists using the heavy traffic area. Whereas the town wishes to convert the roadway section in town to follow our multimodal congestion plan recommendations. Whereas drivers bypass North Carolina Highway fifty-nine by using secondary streets, such as Trader Johnson Streets, in order to avoid heavy traffic. Whereas there is damage to our roadways and to North Carolina Highway fifty-nine from large trucks. Whereas tractor-trailer drivers have difficulty navigating the C S X Railroad underpass. Whereas the town wishes a broader solution to control growth and local development. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Hope Mills Commission requests to change the designation of North Carolina Highway fifty-nine between US three oh one and Rayford Road by removing the primary route designation and revising it to a secondary road designation." And so we just need to approve this resolution tonight, and this then will go back to Mr. Hines, and it goes on to the State Department for this to be approved. So is there any discussion on this, or does anyone not understand what we've done, or what we're asking for?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I understand what the resolution says, but I have some questions.
Okay.
Currently, Highway fifty-nine has a priority, has a high priority of, of maintenance, repair, snow and ice, correct?
It will keep that, that, that's not going to change.
Let me finish.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to.
Okay. It, it will keep that as a secondary road, it will not lower the priority of maintenance, repair, ice, and snow.
It's not going to change it, no.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Don, Don made sure to ask him.
So it keeps the same priority, regardless whether it's a highway or a secondary road?
Mr. Cisco, do you want to come up and answer that, please?
When it comes to response for taking care of the roads during emergency, times of emergency, snowstorms, ice, hurricanes and things like that, the state has a bare roads program, is what they call it. And all of the primary roads are part of the bare roads program, and so that includes Highway fifty-nine. With the change in designation, the one thing that Richie Hines committed to us as a town is that because of the amount of traffic and the load that fifty-nine takes, it would, even as a secondary road, it would still remain on the bare roads program. So that its priority for snow and ice removal, hurricane response, and stuff like that would not change.
Okay, if that's true, I can support it, Mayor.
It's true. That, when we met, we had Mr. Cisco there, and we made sure that we, we asked the questions to make sure that we weren't giving up anything by making the change. What we are giving up is hopefully a lot of extra traffic, and also the opportunity for GPS systems to send them over. for GPS systems to send them over to one sixty-two, especially the trucks that don't really need to come down Main Street. So with that said, any other questions or concerns?
That was the main question I had, Mayor, thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose anything.
Okay.
That was the key, all right.
Mayor, motion to approve Resolution R. twenty-twenty dash forty.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, thank you very much. Next, we have a consideration of accepting grant from the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, Partif, and authorizing the execution of the North Carolina Park Project Agreement for Phase One Construction of Heritage Park. And I got a very nice letter from them, um, congratulating us and of the twenty million dollars that was.
Yep, back from vacation.
And I'm, I'm glad you're here, thank you so much, and congratulations again.
Um, just wanna say, this is routine stuff, um, so this, um, this agreement is, um, the first step and actually starts the, the clock, so to speak, um, the Secretary of Dena will then sign it, and then that's when our three years start. So this right here is the first step we have to go through before we even go through a design contract with, um, McAdams.
Okay.
Okay, so we just need to, uh, have a motion to, um, accept the grant and then authorize the execution of the project agreement.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion.
Motion to accept a grant from N.C. Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, Partif, and authorizing the execution of N.C. Partif Project Agreement for Phase One Construction of Heritage Park.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other kind of questions? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed, and did we think we can get it done quicker than three years?
Absolutely, that's on the way.
Trust me, this has been going on since that sign was put out there about two thousand twelve.
I'm, I'm looking at about two years.
All right, that's wonderful.
We're on the way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, we're on the way.
That, that means a much shorter amount of time than what we've been through. A consideration of accepting board and committee recommendations from the nominating committee, I'll turn it over to our nominating committee, Mayor Protim.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. The nominating committee met on Friday, as you all know, we had two seats, um, we had two seats open on the Board of Adjustments, two on the Historic Preservation, one on the Appearance Committee, and two on the Parks and Recs Committee. The, um, nominating committee would like to nominate Cynthia Helmington, she applied for the Board of Adjustments, Mark Newcomb for Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Committee, and Timothy Widdit for the Historic Preservation Committee, and before, um, we vote on that, I would like to say that Mr. Widdit, he's not a Hope Mills native, um, he is a military veteran, he does not appear to have served on other committees before, but I think it's a good opportunity, as I don't think of any of these individuals have ever served on any of our boards before, and I'm happy that more and different people are applying for the board, and I don't think, we took away the historic commission because we couldn't get the qualifications, and we, that's why we changed it to a committee, because we couldn't get people that met the qualifications, but I do believe there are some Hope Mills natives on that committee, and I do believe that they can help newcomers that want to serve on the Historic Preservation Committee, so, um, I'd just like board action to nominate those three applicants, to accept those three applicants.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that the board accepts the nominating committee's recommendations.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. Uh, we're gonna open that up for more, uh, applications.
It's ongoing.
Good, okay.
Yeah, it's still open.
Okay, yes, ma'am, Commissioner.
Okay, I'd like to, um, see the board's, well, I'd like to get the board's approval for this, we've got, we've had a really rough time, rough time getting committee members to volunteer, and, um, they've talked to their friends and everything, we have a lot of people out in the Grace Creek area that's in the MIA, and they're interested in helping Hope Mills and being on the committees. We have over seventeen thousand people in Hope Mills, and none of them seem to have any interest, and we have a lot in the MIA that is showing an interest. They have lived in Hope Mills, they participate in everything in Hope Mills, our parades, and, um, I just think that we should open it up to include our MIA to any of the committees, and I'd like to see your opinion on that.
Okay, opinions, questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I'd like to say, I know I was kinda crucified for asking for the, um, and I, I thank the board for being open to that with accepting people in the MIA communities, um, as Mr. McLaughlin just presented earlier, seventy-five percent of our annexations for MI, NIA areas, um, I think we're growing, I think that we, we were talking about, um, the Gateway Committee where we were trying to get people in the MIA areas involved, um, I think that they use our Parks and Rec Services, I think that they, we ask them to come and support our businesses, we ask them to come support us in our town events. I would not say that you put, um, an MIA person over, someone in the town if they wanted to, but I would like to maybe see at least one seat, um, is open for people in the MIA areas if they wanted to serve. I'll use one prime example, one of my prime, one of the prime movers is in the MIA area, um, she's an artist, she's actually creating the logo and design and helping the committee come up with a whole lot of things, we would have possibly lost that talent if we would not have opened the door for someone to serve on the MIA, they want to participate, they just wanna help the community, and we can always go back and change it, but I do think that we may need to explore that as a possibility. For instance, our Historic Committee has had a big turnover this year, I would probably say, dare to say that you all can't even get a lot done because you don't have a full committee, um, and so, in desperation, and these seats have been extended over and over and over again. So I, if I, if, if people's gonna be committed and serve and contribute to the community, I would like for us to explore that, I know it's a risk, I think it's a good risk, I think that it's good that we're thinking out of the box, they just did this wonderful article on us yesterday, we're growing, um, and I think that we need these active committees and these people on these committees if they would like to serve, at least one seat, and again, I would not, um, choose someone that actually lived in the city limits of the town, but that is something that I think, um, at, at a desperation, if people wanna serve, 'cause that's where I get most of the, more contact from people in the MIA areas that wanna serve that cannot serve, so that's, that's my two cents on it.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I understand what you're talking about, I served with, uh, Mr. Gorman on the nominating committee, uh, before, and it is hard to get people, um, I'll say what Dr. McCray said, um, I would be open to it, but I feel like, and I think I've said this before, is, I don't think somebody from outside the town should take this position of, uh, in-town resident, if there, if you got somebody in-town and somebody from out-of-town, I think the in-town resident should have, you know, seniority, or whatever you wanna call it, over the out-of-town resident, um, as long as we, as long as we make sure that's being done, you know, in order, in an effort to fill these committees, we may have to do that, or, you know, a, a lot of these committees operating right now, and they're not making meetings 'cause they don't have a quorum, they're not getting anything accomplished, and, you know, the only other option is to do away with them altogether, uh, for lack of particip- participation, and I don't really wanna see that, but I think we owe it to the, to the taxpayers to have first priority, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As you know, in past years, I've served on a number of town committees, chaired a number of town committees, had members outside of the Town of Hope Mills, especially Lake Advisory Committee, which is probably one of the hardest-working committees that we had in recent years. I, I hear the concerns, I would like to know why residents aren't applying to serve on our committees, I, I really would like to know that. I mean, we're approaching, what, fifteen thousand, and growth up to seventeen thousand in, in coming years of, of residents, because the foundation of our standing committees, the membership on those committees are Hope Mills residents, those taxpayers who are, who have a vested interest in recommending, recommendations to this board or the governing body of how to spend taxpayer dollars in Hope Mills, and I don't wanna see that, I don't, I don't wanna lose that on our standing committees at all. I would like to know why our citizens aren't applying to serve on committees, is it time? Is it membership? I, I don't know, I don't know what the cause is, because over the years, we've had a lot of, of folks serve on our committees, re- repeaters for years of service. So if we were to, to look at changing the membership for our standing committees, and I think that's what you're asking, Commissioner Edwards, I think that's what it is, right? Standing committees, not special committees?
No special committee, all standing committees.
Standing committees, okay.
But, but like, um, Dr. McCray said, to have three, four of them, um, from Hope Mills, and anybody that wanted to belong to them, they would be considered if they're taxpayers of Hope Mills, but if they don't get enough to qualify, then I think we should consider the MIA.
We're, and the most members, I guess, on all of our committees are what, seven? As long as four of the seven are Hope Mills residents.
Right.
And to open up the other three to an MIA may be something we need to look at, but that's, that's my position too.
Okay.
The majority of any of the standing committees must be made up of Hope Mills residents.
Right.
Um, I, I, I couldn't support anything less than that, I wouldn't support anything less than that, I wouldn't even recommend anything less than that.
That's what I'm asking.
Madam Mayor, I, I even said just one seat, just right, right now, just try it open for one seat, um, the possibility of, of, of one seat, that'd be more than the majority, just so they can have input, um, but it's, it's at the pleasure of the board, I, I would just say, open it up, small, maybe one seat per, uh, committee, and just see how that works first.
And especially if you're looking at the, our, the way we're rapidly growing in our MIAs, I mean, you look, just look at the number of, of developments that are taking place right now that are, they will have Hope Mills, some of them have Hope Mills addresses that right now aren't in Hope Mills, but they're going to be, um, and you look between here and Exit forty-one, all those houses in there, they're very, they very much think they're part of Hope Mills, so, and, and the same thing as you, um, go up Legion Road, you know, we're, we're, we skip, and then you go down to Island Drive, and they think they're in Hope Mills, but they're not really, but there's a service station that is, so I think that's the thing, is, most of those that are in our MIA identify with us, but, and many of them have Hope Mills address, I mean.
They do?
Yeah.
And they shop, and they work here in Hope Mills? Mayor Protim, I, I can support opening up one seat per committee, I, I can support that.
Make that a motion, I'll see.
I will make that a motion.
There you go.
All right, we have a motion that we open up our committees, uh, so that we allow someone from our MIA, and that's the catch, has to be in our MIA, uh, to serve, have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, and seeing none opposed.
And Mayor Warren.
Yes.
Uh, Jane?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you, um, mind updating some of the committee, I was saying?
The descriptions.
Yeah. Right.
Information, certainly, and I'll look at the rules and I'll, I'll.
Yeah, the rules have to be updated.
And see what rules we need to change.
Rules and procedure.
To change.
Okay.
And, and just for the public, I'd like to say, if you're afraid, uh, to volunteer right now because of COVID, the Parks and Rec Department has done a good job of distancing everyone when they have their meetings, they have in their big room, and they have lots of room for them to be a part, and everyone wears masks, um, so, yeah, we are taking precautions if that's, if that's a, you know, to a reason that people might be hesitant now.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Mayor Protim, and I say that because I, I had such a wonderful experience on Lake Advisory Committee, which was a special committee by the mayor, and we got a lot done on that committee, and not every member was a resident of Hope Mills, but in that committee, it didn't matter. If you, if you were at the table, you contributed, it didn't matter where you lived.
Yeah, and the young man that's actually, um, on the prime mover that initiated this thing with the toy drive, he's another MIA resident, so we would lose that, and I, we possibly will only have five members on that committee if they were not there, and I have talked to some other people in other municipalities, and they don't necessarily agree with it, but we don't have to do what everybody else does either, we can be change agents and cha- and, and shake things up, and at least explore the possibility and see how it works.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I know we've already voted on this, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but, uh, I did have some people, some, some town citizens make comments about, you know, people from outside town coming in, serving on committees and, you know, taking over committees and, but like, like, um, Mr. Bellflower said, they, they're, they make recommendations to the board, they're not spending taxpayer money, they're making recommendations, we make the final decision, so I think, I think it, I think it'll work, and hopefully we'll get some of the, some of the committees out there, they're kinda stagnant right now.
Some interest.
Some interest in, uh, get them moving again.
Well, and, and I, I think too, the things that they do, like the decorating for the holidays, the, the toy drive, you're looking at things that they participate in, and they, they claim Hope Mills because they, like I said, many of them have Hope Mills addresses, so this is a good thing. Uh, next, we have report and information items, do you have anything to add to your manager's report?
Yeah, I just wanna draw attention to, um, I hope you all read the, um, the special events on the Christmas, um, what Parks and Rec has come up with, um, for, um, the special events for the Christmas items, and then I wanted to draw attention to the, um, update on the Remote Domestic Violence Filing Site, did y'all, um, read that? Did y'all be bringing, um, I'll be bringing back, um, hopefully the December seventh, um, a budget amendment for, um, full-time position for that, so, and that's it.
That, and we're, as far as the, the only tree lighting we're gonna do is up here, the lights at the, the lake are just gonna be, um, just lit, 'cause I, I, the way I read this, the tree lighting is gonna be up here at Municipal Park.
Yeah, I believe so.
So what, the, the normal lake, the normal tree lighting at the lake would just be, yeah, this is fine, I, I'm just, I'm so thankful we get to do some things and, and that we can have, have the events, 'cause that's, I was worried about the current changes. Um, I have, um, I've got the, the next meeting of the, um, I don't see a meeting of the Historical Group, I was thinking that what I'd like to, to, uh, ask, um, Dennis Brechner is just about through with the mural, you know, he's painting it on panels, but before it's installed, I would like to, uh, have the, make arrangements with him, I know he's been traveling a good bit, 'cause he's doing gem floors, he was in Johnson City, Tennessee this past week, but what I'd like to do is ask the board if we can arrange a time that maybe they can go by there, maybe I can set it up with him so you can see it, 'cause I'd like to have your approval, and then I'd like to have the Historical Group, um, be able to also see it, because I don't want it to be, um, I want everybody to know what it is, so that that way, when it's put up, there's no surprises, and if there's, you know, and it's not, uh, he is using, um, a drawing of the, uh, Train Depot, but he's backed it up earlier than the nineteen oh eight picture we had, um, but I just, uh, it looks good, but I do believe that it's something that I'd like for the board to approve. Uh, the second mural, uh, he has talked to the, uh, lady that owns the insurance agency there, uh, in the metal building on Trade Street, and she's gonna partner, I think, with the town, and there, that's the site of Hope Theater, the theater burned years ago, but she actually has a picture inside, and, uh, I wanna bring that also to the board and to the Historical Committee, because what, um, they wanna make it look like the entrance to the theater, and have maybe even what might have been showing, uh, the last time it was a theater, so that's, um, but I thought I'd ask the lady that, uh, and her name has left me, but, um, it's Lawrence Smith's daughter, and I, in, anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's, that's the other thing, I was just gonna bring the board's attention, so I may, if you get an email from me telling you that it's okay to go to Dennis Brechner's to Dennis Brechner's, that, but the main thing is I, I just believe y'all need to see it before it goes up. And then we'll have a, he's, what the plan would be for him to put it up, cover it up, and then, and then open it.
Unveiling.
An unveiling, okay.
Madam Mayor, can I ask the town manager a question?
Sure.
My manager's report, before I forget, did, you did address that email from Jerry Jones?
Um, no, I, okay, so, Dan, if you want to address that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This issue with Applegate Road is, it's an issue that goes back quite a long way, back to two thousand fourteen, there was an agreement with the town that we would take over if they paved the road to town standards.
Well, we didn't, at that time, we didn't have standards.
Yeah, well, it was a little nebulous what that meant in contract, but it was, at least defined as, you know, the town has to accept the improvements, which we never did. This was back when Hector was here, he had sent in a court statement saying that they needed to make additional improvements, which were never made. So, the town never actually accepted ownership of the road or anything like that. So, it's, it's not the town's road in effect. We don't, we don't have a, my thing is, we don't own the road.
And it's not in the town limits.
Not in the town limits.
Okay.
And the property on both sides of the road is not in the town limits.
Right. So, at, at best, we had an agreement that we would take over maintenance of the, if they paved it to town standard, which they never did and we never accepted it. So, I'm not sure that we have any authority or ability to maintain that road, because we don't own it, never owned it. I'm not sure the agreement was valid in the first place because it was an agreement between two entities that did not own the road about who was going to maintain the road, that neither one of them owned. So, I'm not sure it's a valid agreement in the first place, but even if it was, we never accepted the road pursuant to the terms of that agreement. So, we just don't own the road, don't have any ability to maintain the road. And I'm going to be writing a letter to.
Okay, so basically, this road, Applegate Road is, it's about the same as Dever Circle. We don't own that one either.
Yeah, I suppose so.
So, who, who was responsible for Applegate, Applegate Road?
The developer.
I don't, whoever owns it, I don't know.
The developer had the, I remember he, that it was brought to our attention, but he had to have the road in order to get where, back there. But if you'll recall, when he came, he never, we never did get a guarantee that he would meet any kind of standard, because at that time, the, the width of the road, I think, the size of the road was an issue.
Yeah.
But we never, I don't think they ever brought it back to the board for a final, I don't think we ever had a final approval from the board. It was just, it was presented as that this, we would accept the road only when it was met standards, that met town standards. And I don't, I believe we had some standards because we had, they had to have something, specifications to go by. I just remember the whole process and I do remember, we were very concerned about the, the way the road was even before he started the development.
And then there was a memo from Hector to JSK builders in May of two thousand fourteen saying essentially, you need to add regulatory signage and road striping. And I'm not aware that they ever did that. And so, it was pretty explicit, the town was not accepting the road as, as presented, and that these improvements need to be made, and those improvements were never made. Not to mention the fact that I don't think the town had the authority to accept the road from someone who didn't own the road. You know, this, this contract is between JSK, who didn't own the road, and the town, who didn't own the road. I'm not sure either one of us had the authority to enter into this agreement about who's going to maintain a road owned by someone else. So, there, there's all kinds of issues with it, but the bottom line is, I don't believe the town owns the road or has any authority or duty to maintain it.
Okay. And you're going to write a letter to Mr. Jones?
We're going to pass that along to.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any staff comments?
No.
Okay. Official comments? Again, Commissioner Legg is in Kentucky. He'll be, I hope will be back for our next meeting. And his grandson did harvest, as he told me, he harvested nine-point deer today. He was very excited about that. Harvesting is a new word for me when it comes to, okay, Mayor.
Me too.
Commissioner Marley?
Yeah, Drew, thank you for answering the questions. Ms. Adams, thanks for answering the questions earlier.
Yep.
Things are productive, meeting, the market was going, but glad to see that, that part moving forward and appreciate, appreciate everybody's input and just glad to be here.
Mayor, please.
Oh, I got one more, I'm sorry.
Oh, you got it.
I apologize. Main thing, and my neighbor will hurt me if I don't say something. Greeley Mitchell called me this afternoon. He said, on behalf of the Veteran Affairs Committee, he would like to thank everybody for their support of the memorial we had in the gym.
It was great.
I know the, the, he said it was very nice, it turned out good. He, he said they were just glad to be able to have it and it was a good ceremony if you didn't get to watch it or, or be there in person. But he wanted to thank all the town staff, the board for being there. And he also wanted to send out a special thanks to Megan with our Parks and Rec for all her hard work that she does assisting them. So, if I didn't say that, I couldn't go home.
Okay, Mayor, please.
Well, I would like to say, in the spirit of what Commissioner Marley has said, that I did thoroughly enjoy the veterans program. I learned a lot, it was really nice. To say that with the positive publicity that Hope Mills has and is receiving and the, the metro, the MetroNet fiber, I think that's going to be good for Hope Mills. Thanks to Drew and Melissa and everyone who worked with this public safety building, I think that'll be really good for us. I think they're going to do a good job and it's going to come, they're going to meet our expectations when it comes to funding and budgeting. I saw in your manager's report that the, if I, we were, we have the bicycle and pedestrian grant that was awarded. I couldn't even mention everything, just like, just a lot of good things going on and the way that they have reimagined Christmas celebration and holidays, so we didn't really have to cancel Christmas. It's like, you can tell it's a lot of work dedication and the plans that Mr. Cisco showed us with Big Ts. I just think it's a lot of progressive and great things happening in this town and I'm glad to see the publicity that's happening that goes on with it. And I have a lot, a lot of questions about that mural and the way that it's going to look, so I'm really excited to see that as well. And I think that's everything.
All right, Commissioner Edwards?
Dr. McCray's already said what I wanted to say, some of it anyway. I can't, I can't talk as much as she can. She's the one that, once I was going to mention, she's already mentioned. So, again, Don, thank you.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming to the Veterans, Veterans Day Memorial Ceremony and on Wednesday, it was really a moving ceremony, if you were there. I also like to thank Melissa and I think Drew's still here, Jane, I sent, I sent these guys a lot of emails today and didn't mean to send them a lot, but I was, had some questions and, and the responses were, were admirable as, as always. And lastly, we started two big projects tonight. So, over the next couple of years, we've got two construction projects going on. And we've got a major renovation about to start with Big Ts down at the lake park. So, we've got a, we've got a lot of things that are happening, that are beginning to happen, positive things, community-driven items that we should look forward to, to coming over the next couple of years. So, thank you, Mayor.
One thing that I would like to commit, really our veterans groups, I think it was five years ago that we got involved with Heroes Homecoming. That year, I went to the meeting, came back with information and met with the veterans group and we did, we, we had an event in Hope Mills. And then each year after that, the event has grown, more of the community has gotten involved. It's been kind of exciting because they, you know, they always want to know what else Hope Mills is going to do. This year, even to include the missing man table, what happened was Heroes Homecoming just kind of took a backseat for this year because of the COVID situation. They did do some things down Aesop and they've got the flags, the field of honor there. Our veterans took charge and planned an event and they planned an event inside, after the weather was in, that was going to be rainy, they put it in the gym, probably the best location we've ever had because you could spread out. So many compliments have come from that and they even invited someone from the Coleman County Veterans Association, which is a first. So, having been involved with Heroes Homecoming all these years, it really made me proud that this year, our town took the initiative to do something very special. So, Parks and Rec, you know, naturally helped pull it off, but it was, it was a great event. Today, I was at a ribbon cutting for the new Army Recruiting Station here and they had the person from the headquarters in Raleigh here, Lieutenant Colonel, can't tell your last name right now, but they were so complimentary of our town because not only are we receptive to them, but the, the head guy, Taylor, I think it's Taylor Lemay, the, the head guy of that recruiting center lives in Hope Mills. He lives in Brightmore and he's so excited about Hope Mills, he's active duty. But I think that was what I came away from that Army recruiter ribbon cutting today, is the number of people that were there that were so proud that it could go in Millstone. And of course, right down the way from there is the Navy recruiter. So, we're very fortunate, we, we have both of those. I did attend the City View Giving Back banquet last week and represented Hope Mills there. They did some great things and they recognized four members of the, really the greater federal community for the things that they've given back. But it was, it was a nice event, it was good that Hope Mills was represented. But having said that, I do appreciate everything Drew's done. I do like the idea that we're going to have the fiber network ahead of other people in our area and I think that's a plus for Hope Mills. So, that's a good thing tonight. So, it's been a great night. With that being said, a lot of positives going on in Hope Mills and we appreciate everybody working on a great team. So, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. See you all December.